All right, well, welcome, everybody. Good morning. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Clark, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Quag.
Here.
Holly Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings. By present, one absent.
Thank you. Um, well, welcome, everybody. Today's strategic planning session, as you've seen on the agenda, is uh, different department heads or um, staff leaders here to brief you on a couple of different things that the council has asked to be briefed on. And so we'll start with state of the workforce, move into um, police workforce in particular, and then of course, um, talk about some of the things that have recently been approved, the project management, and that's why Christina's here, and the library's mental health programming. And um, we will take advantage of strategic planning sessions moving forward to address those topics of interest to council members and look forward to the discussion today. So who's up first? Is it Sarah? Come on up, welcome. Oh, and for the public that might be tuned in, probably seen, we've returned to partial uh, hybrid meeting setup. So some of us will be virtual, some of us will be here in the room. Given the um, rise in cases exponentially of Omicron, the positivity rate we're seeing, the continued steps as a city we've taken to mitigate the impacts and to keep our staff safe, as well as the public that's in our building, safe, we're going to be um, further spaced and separating folks out so we don't have all the principals in the room at one time. Um, and to make it um, safer for both staff involved as well as the public who might choose to be here. Thank you.
Great. Well, Madam Mayor, council members, thank you so much for having me. I'm Sarah Borden. I'm the Director of Human Resources. And I'm happy to have this opportunity to uh, talk to you about state of the workforce. Um, I'll just sort of cut to the punchline early to say, you know, it really is tough. We know it's really tough out there. And the city of Boise is no exception to that. Um, but I just want to be able to show you some data so that you're clear on where we stand. And then to talk about some of the things that we're doing to help um, mitigate that, what issues we have. So I'll start by talking about national and state trends, and then get into some uh, city of Boise specific data. And I'll talk about specific numbers, but I'll also just talk anecdotally about what we're hearing and seeing so that you've, you're sure um, you get a full sense of how things are going. And then I want to focus really on our retention and recruitment strategies. We need to keep our workforce stable and intact, and when then we need to continue to bring in really high quality um, employees as, as we always strive to do. And then I know there are staffing studies um, going on, and I just want to give you a quick update of where that stands. So that's what we've got ahead of us today. So first though, I want to make sure we're clear. These terms get thrown around a lot, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So when we think about a vacancy rate, that's a percentage of vacant positions over a specific period of time. Some of them have been filled and are getting refilled, others might never have been filled yet. So that's our vacancy rate. Turnover rate is when employees move in or out of an organization. So you look at the number of separations over a period of time divided by the employees in the payroll. So vacancy rate and turnover rate, those are two um, areas we're going to cover. So let's talk national trends. You, as you can, hopefully, this is a little bit small, and I apologize, but what you'll see in the dip, that's when COVID really hit, right? There were layoffs, restaurants closed, businesses um, closed down or or uh, laid people off. Then we, we started to come back, but not only did we come back to level, we came back with a whole lot more openings than we had in previous times and previous years. So that's the slide on the left. On the right, what you'll see is the red spike. That's essentially showing the separations that occurred. So to the left of the spike, things are pretty level. You'll have openings and hirings all happening, and it's keeping pe- things pretty stable. Well, when we had separations, you could hire anybody you needed to because there was a large supply of, of employees. That flipped, uh, since the um, economy is back on track, and now we have more, it's higher. Um, there's more positions available than there are workers to do the work.
So to be clear, Sarah, these are national charts.
National trends.
But and but the, do our Boi- our Boise trends follow the same thing?
Yeah, so let me show you Idaho now, and then we'll go from there. That's, go ahead. Yep, sorry.
Sarah, before you flip to that, I just want to be clear. So it appears to me that in addition to the fact that we had all of this um, volatility in the job market itself, there now is job growth above what we were seeing prior to the pandemic. So we've got both that volatility and the extra job growth.
Yes, and on, on top of that, you think of baby boomers are retiring, and that was starting to happen. We started to see an uptick. Well, this just made it that much more, right? Things shifted. People like, I, I'm gonna retire now. Now feels like the right time. So it's a hu- a number of factors that have got us where we are today.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And what I find so interesting about the local issues is it's not what's happening at the city, and Sarah will talk about what's happening at city, is happening in other businesses in the city too. We had businesses come in just last week, and they're facing the same issues that we're finding that we are in terms of trying to recruit, having to do salary adjustments, losing folks to the next company that's going to pay a little bit more and trying to account for that.
A- and Mayor, that's a really good point because we are all competing for the same great workers, right? Public sector, private sector, what we can pay, what we can't. Um, so we really are all in this together. It's not unique to us or even our sector. So this, this is Idaho trends, and there was reporting on this um, in the paper recently. But it's a bit of a busy graph, so let's just walk through some of it. If you look at the spike, that was Idaho unemployed, similar to the previous graph, where once COVID really hit, we had high unemployment. The lighter blue are job postings in Idaho, so you'll see that that has got grown, the job postings. And then the job postings to unemployed ratio. So this is, the punchline here is for every position, um, for every two positions, there's one person for that job. There's one unemployed. So we have two positions open for one individual person to fill it. So we're out of whack in a big way there. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, um, thank you, Sarah. So um, in terms of those who are um, unemployed, looking for work, I mean, I think the the definitions there are also important. Are we, are we looking at anything to attract people who maybe have dropped out of the workforce for a variety of reasons, childcare, um, you know, whatever, whatever?
Yep, and, and what I'll talk to you about when we talk about recruitment are the different strategies we're going to, to try to reach people we might not have reached before. And when we get there, you know, feel free if there's things you've thought over, questions you have around that, but I'll talk to that in a little bit.
But it does seem maybe that we should be looking at the folks who otherwise maybe aren't looking for work as well as those who are.
Sure.
To do that. Is that fair to say?
Well, and there's also something I believe nationally occurring, and it's likely happening here too, which is there's a skills misalignment.
Yeah.
So the jobs that are available are ha- have different skills expectations, not necessarily for the city itself, but in general, as we're looking at this from a macro level, um, the re- retraining kind of career-changing uh, issue, the way it connects with the, the jobs that are available today, I think will remain an issue unless that's addressed at a more systemic level.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, so I'm just going to get um, more into the details of our workforce. And we get asked this a lot, how many people do you have? What's your FTE count? And and I just want to get really clear on the numbers as we know them. So authorized FTEs were at nineteen oh seven. That does not mean individual employees, right? That's just the authorized full-time equivalent. So if you have two half-time people, that's one FTE, just to be really clear. So that shows you the number of general employees, both full-time, part-time, and then um, contract employees. And I have just a reminder that we'll, we'll be hiring in the six hundreds of um, temp and seasonal employees coming in to help with our summer programming. So that's about to start off, and that can obviously sway these numbers a fair bit. Okay, so let's talk vacancy rate. And again, these are the number of open positions. So we currently stand at two hundred and twenty-eight, and which is an eight point three seven vacancy rate. Um, just for some reference, typically our vacancy rate is between four and six percent, so obviously we're above that. According to some recent reporting, um, the state of Idaho looks to have a twelve percent vacancy rate, so just to put that in, in some level of perspective. So it's obviously not where we want to be, but this is just the reality of where we sit right now. So this is information that I think we want to spend just a minute on, which is per department, we want to talk about the vacancy by FTE. So if you can read this, you see that library has our highest vacancy rate. Um, and you'll, I do want to point out in both fire and parks, those are low for the moment. Uh, fire, they had a recruit academy come through, and they're really cyclical. So when they come back and it's time for the next recruiter academy, that'll pop back up again. Same with parks. We're on the precipice of starting new hiring for the seasonals. That'll pop up to cover that. So this shows you that there are sort of no department that's really left untouched by this. Um, library and uh, is currently looking at different staffing models. They have a fair number of part-time employees, so think about what's happened at Cole and Eustick, how we had to change the hours of that. When their full-time workforce needs to be out of the workforce, it has a big impact. So we're looking at ways to help mitigate some of that through um, different staffing models.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, remind me, did, library is not one of the ones who's had a lot of new positions added. So this is largely due to the the kinds of turnover that happened as a result of COVID. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yep, and think about library assistant position.
Yeah.
There, the, the turnover in that, that position i- is tough. So we need to really think about that and look at that differently to make sure that we're bringing people in, we're able to keep those folks, and that we have a workforce that can be stabilized, and that doesn't feel like it's just a constant, it's constant shuffling.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You bet. I also will just point out, you know, HR is toward the high end. We absolutely understand that we're the engine that helps feed the other department's ability to hire. So it is top of mind, we're well aware that if we can't staff well, that has repercussions on the rest of the organization. So we continue to, to really push and, and see what we can do there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just one more, just so we are all clear. As I look at that chart, I also see a lot of vacancies in the mayor's office. But to be clear, that's the office that has had a lot of new FTEs added, so I guess I would expect that more in, in that position.
And I failed.
Library.
And I failed to mention and should have. That also includes Office of Police Accountability and Community Engagement. We lumped those together, so just to be clear, yeah. Okay. Okay, so this is where it gets tough, right? So we, in twenty, I, I will just say twenty twenty is an anomaly in the gr- uh, slides coming forward. Twenty twenty was odd. People sort of froze in place, so I've been doing more comparisons between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one because twenty twenty was so different. But what you'll notice in twenty nineteen, we had two hundred and sixty-seven recruitments. We've added more than a hundred by twenty twenty-one. So recruitments have gone way up. You'll see applicants have gone way down. As I understand it, back uh, several years ago, we would get fifteen thousand applicants. So you just had a, a much larger pool of employees to, to choose from and to work with. Um, obviously, we're not there. So this is why it gets, it gets tougher as we have more positions open and fewer people applying. Whoop. Huh, don't know why that just happened. Let me do it this way. Okay, so let's talk turnover. So in bold, you'll see at the bottom, right now, we're showing a sixteen percent turnover rate, and that includes both retirement and non-retirement. In, in that row, all, all of those could drop by a couple percentage points if you take out retirements, but what we wanted to show you is we went from, you know, sixty retirements at a high to now seventy-eight on the general employee side. Contract employee side has remained relatively stable, so that, that feels good, um, that that is a relatively stable population. But in the general employee side, turnover has increased. You'll see in twenty nineteen, it was starting to go up. Um, and now we're at the sixteen point one. So these are just numbers that tell us that we have issues we just have to be really paying attention to, if nothing more.
And does that get also to just the, the changing demographics of the workforce when you mentioned um, baby boomers starting to age out and retire?
Yep, and it also talks about, I, I can tell you anecdotally, if you think about employees who have been here less than a year, we're seeing higher turnover than we want to see there. So people come in, they get hired, we invest in the hiring process, we start to invest in training. Then they might find out, oh, there's another job. Actually, this is more interesting, or this pays slightly more, or this pays a lot more, whatever that happens to be. So they move on. So we're, not only we're trying to increase staffing, but we're replacing those we just hired. So it just starts to feel like you're treading in water a li- a little bit. Um, so that's something that we need to be paying attention to. And again, I'll talk a little bit more about that when I move on into the next few slides. Okay, I went through three years of exit interviews, starting in twenty nineteen, because I wanted to understand of those willing to tell us. So this isn't all the people that decided to leave, but this is those willing to talk to us about it. In this case, there were a hundred and fourteen participants over twenty twenty-one. Why are they saying they're leaving? What is the reason? You'll see the large uh, percentage of people retiring, isn't that fair enough? But the other was taking other employment. That was higher. I will tell you as a note that in twenty nineteen, taking other employment was actually higher than even this. But the reasons are a little bit different. So um, of this, whoops, sorry. I've got to stop using that. Of this, forty-five percent of non-retirees said either compensation or cost of living was driving them to make this decision. That's different than we saw in twenty twenty nineteen. There were still certainly some of that, but not to this extent. I'll also tell you that my interpretation of the uh, open responses was COVID is really taking a toll on people. Number of people said, I need to be home with family. I have health issues in my family. I have mental health issues myself. I just, this di- it's just too much. I have to step out. Um, so there's a variety of reasons, and, and it's, you know, witnessed here in these numbers. But I did want to be clear that compensation and cost of living are top of mind for certainly a number of employees who wanted to talk to us about it.
So question though, Sarah.
Yeah.
That forty-five percent reporting compensation is in this taking other employment?
And co- and, and the compensation.
Okay, so forty-five percent of the thirty-eight plus eight.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And again, because it's a hundred and fourteen, you know, is the sample size big enough to tell us a whole lot? Well, maybe it's not statistically so, but it is anecdotally when you read the comments of why people are saying they're, they're moving on.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
So um, within this, the uh, taking other, uh, or the compensation and cost of living, I, you may be getting to this. Um, have we updated our, our schedule so that we know if we're competitive? Um, is that relevant right now? Because uh, is competitiveness moving so quick that it's hard to stay up?
Well, and I will talk to that. Your point, you're exactly on. That, that's exactly what we should be watching, yeah.
Well, and council, just as a reminder, approved that as a line item in the budget was um, market adj- a budget item for market adjustments to do just that.
Yeah. Yep, yep. Okay, so let's talk about what we are doing, and I'm just going to focus first on the left. This is, there's a lot of information here, but let's talk compensation specifically. So right now, preparing for the budget build, we are doing our, our next analysis, right? We should always be doing this, and really looking at what additional market rate adjustments might we need to make, either that we didn't take care of back in the fall when we did significant adjustments, or what's changed, and what do we need to be looking at now? In addition, we should always be paying attention to the living wage. Um, it's the right thing to do. We've always paid attention to that, and we'll continue to do that. And then cost of living adjustments. Um, previously, cost of living and performance pay have sort of been lumped in a sim- the same bucket. We're, we're trying to determine, is a cost of living adjustment in and of itself something we ought to be thinking about because inflation, sort of everybody's going through something, right? So we're trying to really take a keen look at that and make sure that we're um, keeping everybody whole in our workforce. So cost of living, we'll do an assessment of that. Um, and then performance pay, we use flex rewards, that will continue on, but that's part of our total reward strategy. So total rewards includes both compensation and benefits, and just really looking at the whole thing and saying, what value are we offering to our employees to keep them and to have them want to continue to contribute um, to the organization? So that's, we're in the throes of that right now. Then I, I've called it culture, but sort of making sure we understand what else is going on. Um, community engagement has done a really good job of launching monthly supervisor-manager meetings. We've had several of them. They're really well attended. And it's things that we um, want supervisors and managers to be equipped with to, in order to work with their own teams. Think about COVID updates. There's a whole lot of that. Think about um, hiring, if we're doing new hires, and we have different uh, ways we're going about that. So that is helping um, supervisors, managers be better equipped to lead their teams. We also will be doing an employee survey. Um, it's been a few years since we did the last one, and it, we know it's very important to understand how our employees doing. We've taught compensation, we've talked exit interviews, but what other things could they tell us that would help us meet them where they are right now? So we'll be doing a survey um, in the next few months. And then we always have our connect Boise Pulse checks. What are those telling us? And are they changing? Is any of the language in those changing? And then um, in our organizational development department or function within um, HR, we're designing what we're calling a Management Essentials course. Think about becoming a new manager and not having training to equip you to be ready for that. How do you look at a budget? If you're going to recruit, how do I go about that? What kind of interviews might I do for folks? And then how do I lead um, versus just simply managing? And that's been something we've looked at, and we think is, is really quite important, and we're going to get um, moving on pretty quickly so that people feel well-equipped to lead in a way they need to that might be different than even a couple of years ago. I also now want to talk about recruiting strategies. So again, community engagement has been wonderful partners in that they came to us and they said, we know you're doing um, recruiting and advertising, but maybe we can help bolster that. And so we've been working in partnership with them to think about, is there digital advertising? We could be doing differently. Think television, for example. We have uh, paid and organic social media, so think Facebook, Instagram, that kind of thing. And we've seen um, real, real success if you think about LinkedIn, and someone posts something, and then other people happen to share it. Um, that can really catch like wildfire, and, and that's, we've had success there, and that's just organic social media. We've also talked about doing direct mail. I don't know how many people forwarded to me um, direct mail pieces that we've gotten in our homes from other agencies and said, hey, did you see what so-and-so is, is doing? Um, and that's not lost on us. We need to make sure that we're in there. I'll also point out, we're talking, and I'm going to jump a little bit, but the, to bilingual strategy. So think about direct mail. Are there bilingual pieces that we could send to communities that we haven't been sending things to and should be? So that's one area we've been thinking about. Um, as well as fleet wraps decals, just getting ourselves physically visibly present um, in the neighborhoods, and then radio. We've been doing bilingual radio for fire for years. How do we expand that to others? Yes.
Madam Mayor, uh, Director Borden, these are great ideas. My, my question is about um, being a little bit more customized, because you can dump a lot of money into these things and with the spray and pray approach.
Yep.
Tell me about how you're going to customize this for effective use of taxpayer dollars.
Well, I think if you, the direct mail's a perfect example. If we're going to send that to different communities, what are the skill sets we're looking for, and what are the skill sets that might reside in those particular communities as an example? Um, when you think about LinkedIn, who are the users of LinkedIn? Tends to be management leadership positions, those kinds of. So in that sense, um, we're trying to slice and dice it that way. I'd be happy to hear more if you have thoughts on that for sure about how we could do that. But that's the intent. If you think about a fleet wrap, there, that is not customized. That's just anyone who happens to have eyes on it as we're driving through neighborhoods. Um, radio, bilingual is an example of that. Um, but again, I'm happy to, to hear other thoughts if you've got them.
Madam Mayor. Um, thank you, Sarah. Um, you know, I think something that we haven't talked about, and maybe you'll touch on it at some point, but I think a lot of folks um, who perhaps are not rushing back to get into the workforce just now, some of them for, are for some of the reasons that Council President Quag brought up about childcare and that sort of thing, and perhaps even uh, caring for adults who, who need care right now. But on top of that, I think that folks are also valuing their lives more.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, valuing how, how and with whom they spend their, their lives with. And so I think work culture is a big part of it. And I appreciate the efforts to reach out to those folks who have left and who have been willing to share, you know, why they chose to leave our organization, but um, I know for myself, I have never gotten a job because I applied cold for it. I needed to have somebody on the inside. In fact, the job I currently have is the only job I've ever applied cold and gotten it. And so, and a lot of that has to do with the culture. Um, and I'm wondering, are we talking to our current staff about getting referrals from them and having them help us recruit people? If they're satisfied with working with the city of Boise, perhaps uh, they're the way in in terms of recruiting other folks. I know that's always been how I've entered uh, the workforce, is by somebody who currently worked for the organization. Not only could they vouch for me, but they could vouch for the organization
Yep.
that I was considering joining. So just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, and, and that's a really good point, and that's where I think uh, you know, I keep talking about LinkedIn, but that's where you will see um, employees sending it to other employees or sharing it in their own sort of bubbles. Um, that's one way that that certainly happens. We've talked about potentially doing incentive programs, but that requires some workforce to develop the incentive programs which we're just tied on. So that's where it's getting a little tricky, but your point is a very good one. That's, that's a, something we have to really keep in mind too.
Director Borden, um, can you talk to us a little bit about um, demographics in terms of how different generations see work and how we can alter our approach? Because I know I see work differently than my children see work, than my parents see work, and I think we have to adapt to the millennials and all of, you know, the new generation that are coming in. Can you talk a little bit about how the city is going to try to do that?
Yeah, and the most overt answer is hybrid work has been really a godsend for a number of people to say, okay, I get to work the way I need to work and how I need to work. Um, that's one of them. The other, and let me, I'm gonna answer the next thing that might help with some of that, because I know we need to keep moving on. Um, when we get to benefits, right now, there's a sixty-day wait time before benefits kick in. We're trying to shorten that. That, that's just a, pretty much a must-do. So we're working through the details of how to go about that. And then I, specific to the point about how do we attract certain generations, this concept of choose-your-own-adventure benefit design, somebody might care more about pet insurance than, you know, anything else, right? So how can we get it so people feel like the city gets me? They know that there are things I might want that somebody else might not. So I get to hybrid work, and I get to decide what benefits I take um, as reward. So that's one. Um, and then the, the third thing just to mention is this concept of the applicant experience. Are we sure that we're doing the best we can to make the applicant experience easy? Through the process, they get excited. It doesn't just feel like another, you know, administration sort of chugging them through. So really looking at improving our hiring and onboarding processes. Okay, and I'm just going to add two more things, and then I can, I can move on. I'm, I'm bringing this up just very quickly, that we're going to come back to you about a human resource management system, and that's not a super exciting thing with the exception that where we don't have it, this is why we're having some trouble even with, with the data we're trying to get. So there are ways to um, improve our process time and cost and reduce errors, and then integrate better across the system so that we can provide better service to our own internal customers and move at a different pace. And I would love a day where we can do predictive modeling. Instead of looking in the rearview mirror and saying, oh darn, that happened, how do we adjust now? It's saying, we can see what's coming, we can prepare ourselves for it. Without better data and a better system, we just, our, our hands are tied. So we'll be coming back to you about that. And then this is just my last slide. This is just a quick update. Given our own staffing levels, we haven't been able to lead any of these staffing studies, but we certainly are offering our subject matter expertise. Airport, they're in the thick of it right now, and they think they'll be done in twenty twenty-two February, so their, theirs is a smaller um, version of something they did not too long ago. Public safety, I know the council is very interested in the details of that. That we anticipate coming summertime. And then Public Works is doing work now that's the February through May where they'll come back to us. So that's just a quick update and timing that those are going on. A lot of details I just don't have. We haven't been as engaged in that. So that's it. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, uh, Director, do we have any data in terms of these studies about barriers to employment at the city, for instance? Do we have any data to show that we're not getting applicants because the city of Boise requires vaccinations?
I, I don't have that specific data for you. I'm sorry, I just don't know that.
So we don't track it?
I, it would be, I think.
Well, and also I'll just jump in, that is just newly effective. So it's like, since it's not something that we would have anything to tell us otherwise at this point.
And, and it's tricky to know because we don't know if someone chooses not to do something if they chose not to. So that's just a, a bit of a sticky one.
We went, we don't have any anecdotal where someone said, hey, I would love to work here, but, okay.
I, I don't. I just don't, yeah.
Madam Mayor. Um, so a couple of, couple of things. I mean, on the data front, uh, I'm really looking forward to seeing some of that, especially how we compare to other large employers in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that'll be somewhat indicative of who we can attract. But I am still really curious about thinking hard um, about attracting people back into the workforce that have left the workforce, and what it might take to do that. Um, I, I think, you know, elder care is one piece of it, childcare is another piece of it, skills training is a third piece. Um, there, the, the cultural issues with um, the generational changes are another piece of that. You know, is it, is it uh, flexible work schedules? Is it hybrid work? Is it training, you know? So as we go forward over this next year, I'd hope that um, you guys can do some thinking about that, because I think long-term, you pointed it out, there's two point three jobs for every employee.
Right.
We're, we're never going to feel.
We're, we're never going to fill these jobs if we don't find other employees who aren't currently looking.
Yep. Yep. No, your point is very well taken and that is top of mind for sure. All right.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
And next up, we've got Chief Lee. You know, one of the things that we've said is really important as a council is to, at this moment in time, as our city grows, as we maintain trust in the police department. To do it differently than other places have. And so we've made clear to the chief, to the department. That we understand there are growth needs, growth expectations as our community grows, but that we want to. Parallel track that with maintaining and growing the trust in the department. And so the chief is here to talk specifically to the needs within, needs and trends within his department's workforce. In response to much of what the council and our administration have asked him and the department to respond to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, both here in person and virtually. The goal really here with this presentation is, as the mayor said, to really provide greater context to some of the. Staffing issues related particularly to the police department. And the presentation will parallel and echo much of the information the Director Borden presented. Really going to go through, talk about current, current staffing numbers, recent trends, both nationally as well as for the department. Look at some of the short-term strategies we've implemented, long-term strategies, just as an overview to the flow of this. The picture on the slide in front of you is the first recruit academy class from 2021. The relevance of why that's such a large and diverse class will play out as I work through this presentation. So when we look at vacancies. When we look at vacancies in the Boise Police Department, we're authorized 328 sworn positions. We have 297 filled, leaving about 31 vacant. That is on par with the vacancies that we have maintained historically relevant to authorized staffing levels. However, there are some distinct challenges going on now that that first blush wouldn't necessarily identify for you. So if we look at the next slide here, this is 2019 through 2021 data. The gold bar represents those that we've hired. Dark blue resigned, light blue discharged, the lightest blue being retired. And what you can see is that we are seeing greater numbers of retirements and resignations occurring. That matches with some challenges as a national trend in policing. But you'll also notice that there's been a substantial effort to frankly, put into overdrive our hiring and onboarding process. There was a bit of a freeze in 2020. The staffing issues and the shortages that were here in the department were recognized as a critical need when it came aboard. You'll see that emphasis in 2021 really played out in my first full year in office and why there's such a large number of onboarded personnel. I think the best way to illustrate the application trends, how many folks we see actually applying to be police officers. Rather than do it by years, because there have been an increase in the number of open applications in a given calendar year. Is to show it by actual applications and then the number of folks that applied. So you can see in 2017, when we posted to hire police officers, we had 374 applicants. However, in our most recent posting in 2021, we were down to 75 applicants. Some of that plays into whether or not we're looking to recruit lateral officers or whether or not we're looking to recruit. Folks that are new to the profession and invite them in. But the reality is that it is trending down nationally.
Chief, I have, I have a question about that though, because there are two listings for 2021.
Because we had two, two separate postings in 2021 for two different hiring blocks. We've also changed the data for the 2021, the large number is the change to the continuous opening of applications, which is one of our short-term strategies. It's addressed in a few slides.
But in 2017, there was only one opening?
That would be correct. And it was a limited duration opening, Madam Mayor. So in other words.
Doesn't that mean there are actually more people this year that have applied than in 2017?
Not necessarily by application. So what happened in 2017 is they essentially posted one to run one recruit academy. In that single posting, 374 people applied.
Gotcha.
2021, we switched to a continuous opening. So like we left it open for the entire year for new hires. We only got 370. So close to the number. And then the continuous opening for lateral posting garnered us 75.
Okay, thanks.
So we're, we're seeing overall, when we look at over time, substantially smaller numbers applying. Which is a trend in public safety. I know in talking to the fire chief anecdotally, his pool, what isn't affecting him as much in his department. He estimates his pools down to about the third of the size it historically has been. It's still enough for him to fill his recruit academies. A little bit of a different dynamic in policing. I would be remiss if I didn't say that some of the, the current rhetoric and negativity surrounding policing that's on the national narrative does have an impact here in Boise. It is not as significant an impact that we feel here, but it is clearly impacting some of the numbers as well as just. A change in who's interested in pursuing a police career. There's a significant amount of data showing that, that officers are being encouraged to leave the profession at a rate higher than we've seen historically. Anecdotally, we hear that inside the department, we've had a few cases where significant others, family members, spouses have encouraged officers to leave the profession. Out of concerns of the challenging environment largely driven by the national narrative. But when we look at the larger data that we see, the police executive research forum, one of the premier policing think tanks in the nation. They've recently compiled data from April of 2020 to March of 21. And then from 19 to 20 of that same timeframe, what they saw is that the average hiring rate for police departments was down 5%. But resignation rates, so people choosing to step out of the profession before retirement eligibility is up 18% nationally. In retirement, people that are eligible to retire is up 45% nationally. So it is clearly having some impact. What is unique?
Just, I was going to try to let you finish, but I, I don't know exactly where you're going to finish. So I'm going to pop this in here and, and see if you're going to address it. As I look at these and I look at the resignations in the prior slide. In my experience with some of these. You know, applicant pools, or at least the knowledge, a little bit of knowledge I have about it. Wonder if we know, are there any trends? I mean, the number is concerning, but. As I've always understood it, there were a high number of people who applied, who probably weren't going to get hired, who. You know, saw this as something they thought they want to do, but they didn't have the training, they didn't have whatever. Are we, are we actually seeing better qualified applicants among the ones who do qualify? And is there a way that we can focus in on that to actually help build the kind of police force that we're looking to build?
And Madam President, that's, if you don't cover it today, it'd be worthy of, of another conversation. But I have a feeling some of it's covered because I think what you're getting at is, are we actively developing programs? To recruit people that match our values, that want to serve our community and serve our residents? And the answer is, I'm going to jump in here because I really appreciate it. Yes. The chief is thinking hard, working hard with a team of folks to do what we have asked him to do. Which gets back to maintaining trust in the department. Recognizing the impacts of the growth of our community at this time. And the, the, the moment in which we're in where it's hard for many cities to be willing to grow department. We have said, we're going to do it differently. And the chief is helping us do that. By working to create programs to recruit people that match the values that we have within our community for our policing. And I really appreciate that. So I wanted to say that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we will address some of those efforts in a few slides, Council President. But one of the most unique challenges we're experiencing here in Boise, and I don't think it's unique to the police force. But it's frankly, it's the housing market and the wage that we pay for a police department of our size is a bit of a challenge. So. Other markets that have comparable housing prices have higher pay if we look at, say, the Intermountain region or the Pacific Northwest. And so if I have a young person who's entering into the police profession, who is mobile, like we see many workers now willing to be. And they're looking at, say, Denver, Colorado, and they're not really mining into necessarily the total benefit package that we offer, which makes us much more competitive. But that first blush salary, which is, I'll just say it because I have some kids around that age, you know, but the college kid will look at that. We don't grab the attention the same way. Denver, Colorado is just a rough analog. Denver, very close housing market, the average home price. The top step officer pay though is about a $30,000 a year difference. And so when somebody just glancing at that, looks at that, Denver seems to be a more attractive option. And so that is making it very challenging. We have had recruits that were in process. Lateral officers that have watched the housing market here tick up and about halfway through the background process called and said, I don't think that I can afford the quality of life for my family that I'm accustomed to. I'm going to withdraw my application. So, and that's. A factor that's a challenge, I think, not unique to policing, but I think almost all of the directors here would say it's impacting their ability to recruit for workforce as well. We are also in the middle of a staffing study. I will let that bear out, but even in the kickoff meeting that I had with Matrix Consulting yesterday. I think they're recognizing the likelihood that the outcome will be that the police department needs to grow. There's some assumptions that the department needs to grow to meet city growth as well as the current size of the city. I won't draw conclusions of what matrix will come to ultimately in their study, but I think it would be fair to say. The department does need to grow one way or the other. I'll switch to this slide, which speaks really to some of the growth challenges. And so there's some arbitrary picks in this just, just to make for conversation pieces. So. We historically have hired into an academy class somewhere in the neighborhood of about 12 officers a year up until the last few years. We're seeing not just the baby boomer retirement, but many of the people that entered into the police profession. Mid 90s to the mid 2000s, when most departments grew. Those people are hitting career maturation. They're choosing to leave the profession at some of the increased numbers that we talked about. And so we're projecting based off of the retirements, we're seeing the beginning of that wave. If I were to hire at the historic rates in the ballpark, using 15 as a number, you can see the trend line, the dark blue trend line. If we hired at 15 based off of expected attrition rates, both retirements, resignations. Ultimately by 2031, the department's more staffing will be under what it is now. If we hired at about a 30 officer rate, I did it in blocks of 15 or asked the staff to. You'll see that the department grows to about 377. That's actual officers aboard, not authorized officers aboard as a, as a difference. You can see if we were pushing at 45 officers a year, just as another gauge. And depending on where staffing studies predict, you can kind of pick in between those lines to envision the growth that'd be necessary for the department. About 45 officers a year, which would be substantial considering up until a few years ago. 12, 15 officers tops a year was what we were accustomed to onboarding. I recognize there's a lot of data on that graph. Just kind of leave it up for a few seconds for you all to look at it and to ask any questions that you may have about it. And I'll talk about some of the other challenges we're having there.
Yeah. So as I look at this, a couple of things come to mind. One is. Where should we be in sworn officers in 2031? Given the growth and, and I'm, you know, that will be part of the staffing study. We'll have part of that answer. The other is, if I look at that high number and I look at. I remember, you know, various jobs in my career. How do you onboard 45 people a year and maintain any kind of cultural stability within the department? So I think there are some challenges with, with keeping up. Not that they can't be overcome, but we should be aware of them.
And that, that's part of our deliberate recruitment efforts, which I think will follow on the next slide, Council President. I will mention that one of the challenging things that we have that is a little bit unique to policing is that. We have a rule of 80 under the Percy retirement system, but you can also leave after, once you hit age 50 and accept a penalty. And what we're experiencing now is more officers and it speaks to sort of this. We don't count it as a resignation because they're technically capable of retiring, but we used to be able to predict retirement as this person hits 80 points. They're probably going to leave sometime around then. It's, it's becoming more challenging for sworn officers because various different familial pressures, cultural pressures, they're age 50. And they're willing to accept that retirement penalty to just opt out of the profession. And so that has created sort of a window of instability of being able to predict. So there's the potential of, of greater attrition rates than what we see here, not lesser. Some of the short-term strategies that we have implemented obviously are to partner with HR to actively recruit and attract new laterals as well as. New to the profession. There's a very deliberate effort by the department. Recognizing frankly, some of the institutional, the technical institutional knowledge that you have from policing, leaving with this many senior officers facing retirement. We're very deliberately marketing and recruiting lateral officers from other police departments that are midway through their career. It gives us the benefit, one of essentially buying the experience they developed someplace else and putting them in. So there's not such a technical brain drain, for lack of a better way of phrasing it, to the department. The other big advantage is it mitigates this sort of retirement wave, these big waves. For whoever's sitting as the police chief in 20 years, I don't want 20 years from now, somebody sitting in front of an entirely different council. Wrestling with the same problem at a larger scale. So we're very deliberately trying to onboard. For the next few years at about a two thirds, one third effort, we're seeking out laterals with experience that are capable of moving to this community. That meet and match the values of this community, efforts of community policing that we've strongly embedded in this department. To really help mitigate that and bring in institutional knowledge while at the same time. Essentially buying new cars to add to the fleet, getting these young folks that are brand new to the profession in as well. We developed a recruitment committee internally to the department to visit applicants. We've reallocated funding inside the department to allow them to travel. With a deliberate effort to go to some of the college sources that we have throughout, as well as to visit local career fairs throughout the state. We've been very mindful to build a committee that attracts honor represented demographics in the department. So that we're tapping in to maybe folks that have, we are seeing honor representative apartment pools. For example, very deliberate to make sure that we have women recruiters on. To make what is attractive to this organization for them professionally and to be able to market that to that demographic where we haven't seen the number of applicants that we have. Like Councilmember Wilt, I think you have a question?
Oh, you are good. You can see it. Yeah. My question is, Madam Mayor and Chief Lee, in terms of lateral recruitment. Is there a benefit in doing that? Because typically those who are lateral have already been in the housing market and it's easier for them. To make that change. Is that a benefit of lateral recruitment in, in addition to all the technical things and the talent? But I'm wondering if that helps us get over that housing barrier.
That is part of it, Councilmember. Many of them, you know, if you think about, you know, 10-year officer with a family, they've invested in a home, they at least have some, some equity. It's not usually what most people think, but they have some ability to cash out the housing market they're in and mitigate that impact. Plus the starting salary for a lateral officer is higher than for an entry level officer. So that helps mitigate it, but it is still a challenge. We're seeing lateral officers that are not feeling as competitive in this housing market for a quality of life for their family.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, a quick question for you on that. It's something I've been curious about. Do you have a sense for lateral officers who are choosing to come to Boise or come to Idaho? What it is that attracts them and why they're leaving their, their existing stable employment in another jurisdiction?
There, there are a variety of reasons that people are choosing to change sort of their workplace. Anecdotally speaking, one of the largest answers that we receive is that people stepped into the profession, wanting to do community policing and serve a community. And because of other decisions in other communities, the departments are underfunded, understaffed, and they're no longer able to go out. And connect and serve a community. They signed up to be community police officers and what they find themselves being is. Emergency responder, call takers, and the work satisfaction is not there. And they're willing to change that. Work environment for that opportunity to be engaged in a police department that's committed to community policing versus one that's purely reactionary.
Madam Mayor and Chief Lee, can you level set what community policing means? Because I think it, there's some differentiation about what that means to certain folks. Can you level set our language on that?
So there's, there's some very technical stuff that I, I won't bore you with about discretionary time that's necessary to me. But functionally, community policing means that we are policing the community on the issues that they care about, that we're leveraging strong partnerships. And that we're ensuring that we have dedicated units as well as discretionary time for patrol. To build those relationships in the community, to work with them as peer partner stakeholders in the public safety realm. Does.
And from a, kind of from a city budgeting perspective, I mean, community policing is more people intensive. So it requires more officers, more time to build those relationships, to be in community with folks, to address the needs a community has.
It is a, a more resource intensive approach. However, all of the research shows that it is the most significant tool that we have for driving down crime, violent crime and increasing. Trust and legitimacy with the police department. There's some research, one of our lieutenants recently. trust and legitimacy with the police department. There's some research, one of our lieutenants recently did, that I'd be happy to come back to the council to talk about the high trust and legitimacy from procedural justice lens that our department enjoys based off of 2020, 2021 data, but perhaps for another time. We're looking at updating and streamlining the hiring process. So we're examining any barriers that are unintentional in the hiring process. One of the classic things that most police departments have is a very linear progression through hiring. You apply, then you move to this step, then you move to this step. If you look at the modern workforce, sort of the choose your own adventure approach, to coin one of my colleagues phrases, is much more common. And so the ability to essentially block out sections of the hiring process and, and say, these four different things have to be accomplished in this phase. Do them in whatever order works for your schedule. So we're examining different efforts to be able to do that. We're also very deliberately growing the training, education, development division, both as the ability to onboard, to have the capacity to meet the 45 officers a year if necessary, as well as to be able to develop strong retention strategies, include things like wellness programs, a variety of other programs to help ensure that we're keeping the valued workforce, that they feel valued, that they're here. We, they know that we're investing in them. We're developing as leaders. So that it doesn't just simply seem like a place to work, but there's much more sense of belonging to it. Some of our longer term strategies and really some of the, the more significant challenges are really the ability to balance both the need for long-term strategies with the ability to fund them. Obviously we need to look at what will be adjusted based off a matrix of staffing study. But we do have a very focused and deliberate recruitment effort. We're also looking at not just, not just the technical skills that people bring, but educational levels, other benefits and what other barriers we may have so that we can help people that are interested in the profession succeed in the application process. As an example, our refugee liaison has recognized that we've had members of the refugee community apply to be police officers in the past, but because of some of the cultural context differences, they have not necessarily succeeded. One of my colleagues, what Director Borden mentioned earlier that you know, there's a generational issue where people now are more comfortable moving for jobs. Hey, this pays more. I'm going to move. I'm going to move. Job loyalty is not viewed the same as it was perhaps a generation or two ago. That has generally been viewed as a negative in most background processes for policing. That plays out to an even larger degree with immigrant communities who are struggling to make money. So we are looking at how do we examine with a lens? How do we tell people in the background process to help explain why they made those movements so that that doesn't become a barrier that essentially off ramps them out of the process when they may very well be a high value candidate for the department. We've also added an additional academy class to increase the capability and we're examining the ability to deliver academy classes less in a block format. So it's much easier to deliver all lateral training than all new higher training than all lateral training. We recognize though, that if we do it in windows, we may have people that choose to opt out and go to other departments. Because they want to get into the profession. We also are recognizing some challenges in our ability to be competitive in the marketplace and we're examining potential strategies to do that. Whether those are hiring bonuses or things that need to be addressed on the CLA, the collective labor agreement. But as a point to illustrate sort of the challenges with the job market, Boise Police Department used to be the highest paid premier department to work for in the state. Most of our peers have reached near parity with us. We recently had two applicants elect to go to the Meridian Police Department instead of ours because of they had a more scaffold approach to how they recognized longevity and experience as a lateral than we had constructed in agreement with the union. So there are other issues long-term that we need to work through. However, we also have to make sure that, very frankly, we don't out price ourselves from the police department that we need. So it's a challenge that will have to be negotiated in part with the CLA, but also with a strategic vision to what we can afford to continue to do. With that, I will stand for any questions that the council may have.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, thank you for the presentation. And I, I appreciate your efforts as far as really recruiting officers that are, are great for the city of Boise, specifically the efforts to recruit women. I'm curious, as far as a retention standpoint goes, how are our mental health support for officers compare to other cities? And if there is a need to expand or grow there, knowing that it is a really difficult time to be a police officer?
So we are, as part of the wellness program, really building out not just the physical health of our officers, but mental health capabilities. We're examining to make sure that in peer support situations, that there is some degree of confidentiality. We're having conversations to ensure that the right people are in the room, to ensure that that remains a confidential conversation. So people are more likely disclosed. We're trying to do everything we can to normalize mental health care. We're having officers that are willing to speak about their own personal experience for seeking out mental help to come forwards and, and basically de-stigmatize the efforts, but it is a priority for us, recognizing the strains that are going on.
Madam Mayor, just a quick call up there. Chief, thank you for the answer to that question. That, that's definitely an area that's, you know, close to my heart, just because I know that we need people to be able to show up the best that they possibly can. And so if that's an area that we can continue to invest in, certainly supportive of that.
Madam Mayor?
Thanks, council member. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I just really want to thank you so much for highlighting some of those barriers that exist to having some members of our community be able to consider this profession as one for them. I don't think we discussed that enough, how often these human-made barriers exist and that we made them, we can remove them. And I think it would be very healthy for Boise to have more people of color, more people with an immigrant background be in leadership roles. Not just for members of the community to see one of their own in, in uniform and, and in that position, but also for a community that's almost all white and as not accustomed to seeing people like myself or you chiefly be in these leadership roles. I think it's healthy for an entire community. And so I just want to thank you for making that effort and identifying that issue.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I guess I do have one more question. And it doesn't the question is the, the staffing report, the staffing study that we're getting for the police department, does that include a wage study as well?
It does not. I do not believe that there's any intent for a market comparison based on the initial planning meeting I had with them yesterday, though. There is, there is going to be a very deliberate look at the long-term strategy in growth versus sort of a snapshot and time staffing study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up we've got Christine.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Christine Miller, Deputy Chief of Staff. It's nice to be back with you today. It's been some time since I've been before you. I am returning today at your request to follow up from our December IBC requests on the state of project management at the city. And very well positioned agenda, I suppose, because I think what I will talk about builds strongly on the presentations you've just had on the state of the workforce. To, to start off, I'd like to, as my peers did, a level set on some terminology. Just so that we're clear about what we're talking about related to project management. So I view the work at the city as being kind of two buckets. There's the run the business work, which is really delivering our day-to-day services. Thinking about operating water renewal, business licensing, issuing permits. Also the programming we deliver through our libraries, parks and recs department. That is the day-to-day business of running the city. Separate from that is a smaller bucket of work, which we call projects. These are bits of work that have specific start and end dates. They have a specific scope, a separate budget line item. And examples of those might be upgrading or building new facilities, implementing a new technology system. And project management, what we're talking about in this context is really the dedicated capacity, the people power to keep projects moving on time and on budget. And when I'm speaking of project managers, I'd like for us to start to mature our project management and really be talking about project managers who are trained and accredited professionals in that specific line of work. So in terms of the project landscape at the city, since fiscal year 20, we've been closely monitoring our project starts and completions. And over fiscal years 20 through now, we've identified both the needs and the funding for about 300 projects per year. And because we've been carefully tracking our progress, we have figured out that our actual capacity to deliver is about half of what we need. So if in any given year, we identify 300 projects that the community needs and wants, and that we have funding to do, we're only actually able to complete about half of that work. And when we reflected on that as an executive management team and said, what is holding us up? Why, if we have both the needs and the money to do this, are we not able to accomplish this body of work? The key barrier that was identified was project management. And so that leads us back to our current staffing model. So the city has historically been staffed to run the business. And projects have been assigned to staff kind of on top of their other day-to-day service and supervisory responsibilities. And if you think about what we've just heard from Director Borden and Chief Lee, that's not a very sustainable model for the situation that we're in now, right? We want our people delivering programs. We want our supervisors and managers focusing on those folks. They have been spending a lot of time recruiting and training. And so we connected those dots and said, wow, just assigning this additional project management to the scope of work of a, a day-to-day employee that has management supervisory responsibility has not been the best way to go about that work. Over the years, we've supplemented our workforce with contract project managers. And the flexibility that that's provided us is not having to add headcount to the city, not adding people on our, our permanent payroll. But that short-term work comes at a high cost. So each year we had been assigning one-time dollars per projects. And the cost of those contracted resources is about twice the cost of what it would be if those were on staff. And so slowly over the years, we've been in-sourcing project management and we found that it's worked very well. So examples of that are Public Works Airport and IT, where we've moved contract professional services dollars into regular staffing dollars and really gotten terrific bang for our buck. In addition to those shifts, we've also been maturing our project management skills. And that has been needed because of the increasing complexity of city projects. Examples of this in the Public Works Facilities Team, they have expanded their scope of work as well of as kind of the scale of the projects they're doing. So Public Works Facility Team is now managing all of the facility work for fire, libraries and parks. And in addition to that, Wendy, who is on my team here in the mayor's office, her position was added in FY 20. And she has really been looking across the whole city at all of the projects we're attempting. She's been tracking and monitoring that success and throughput rate, and then also looking at the timelines and dependencies between these projects to make sure that we're spacing the work in a way that's accomplishable. And as we started to look ahead, we realized, looking at our capital plan and the project portfolio that we had planned, we saw a huge body of work staring us down in the next five years or so. Included in that is about 60 million in facility-related projects. And those are everything from fire station rebuilds, new fire stations, relocation of services for parks and rec, investment in potentially some new pools. A lot of work that we'll be doing at the library, at the downtown branch for major repairs and maintenance. And if you look at that work, just maintaining our current assets, delivering our projects per our capital portfolio, and then you add in these ambitious affordable housing goals that we have. Important neighborhood investment program, projects that have been identified, work that we've already allocated money for to make ADA improvements, both to our facilities and downtown parking. And then anticipating new projects that may be made available through one-time federal funding, such as through ARPA or the infrastructure bill, we said, wow, that is a lot of work and those are some big complex things. A scale at which we haven't done before. And this would be the time, if we know that project management is a barrier, to bring on some additional folks. In addition to that, we would like to centralize project management so that it's not one or two individuals in any given department kind of doing their best and trying to move things forward. But really bringing a team of folks together that can look at it across the organization and allow us to streamline that delivery. Make sure that we're getting the stacking benefits out of some of these projects that you all have expressed to us. So for example, if we're going to invest in an affordable housing initiative, make sure that we're also accomplishing our climate goals, our transportation goals. As we're moving through these big facility builds or overhauls, making sure that we're accounting for our clean city metrics and our climate outcomes. Last point is that when we bring this together in a more coordinated and central way, we are able to use more consistent methodology and provide more timely reporting to you all on the work that you don't typically see behind the scenes on our projects. So to sum all of that up, in our current state, we are operating within this citywide project portfolio. We've got a patchwork of contracted project managers, some dedicated department project managers. And then, like I said, some large one-time contracts to bring in additional folks. And really these projects are kind of flowing each on their own and allocated resources are kind of as available. In our future state and what the addition of the project managers that you funded in December will allow us to do. We will still be using that citywide portfolio as our single playbook. But then we'll be bringing in this centralized team, bringing in consistent methodology and reporting. And really looking to allocate resources to prioritize the things that are most important to the community to move more quickly. And again, those things include affordable housing. That includes public safety facilities, ADA enhancements, library. So really looking at the things that the community have said are most important to them and making sure that those get across the finish line on time, on budget. And so the team of folks working on this in green boxes are the new headcount that you all allocated. I am on this org chart along with my partner in crime, Public Works Director Steve Burgos. He and I are really locked arms and said, let's bring together the project management resources that we have and bring that team together and in a bit of a dotted line. So in the background today, Wendy on my team, Rob and Sean on Director Burgos's team, these folks are really going shoulder to shoulder. They're working to, you know, level load work across their teams and make sure that the project managers that we're bringing in with kind of this higher skillset, actually credentialed folks are working across departments and making sure that that most important work is moving as quickly as possible. So we will be opening those new positions for recruitment soon. Our strategy is going to be to look internal recruitments first, to try to bring any folks up in the organization that have demonstrated capacity and are willing to take a step up. We'll also be opening externally then to backfill any holes we might leave so that we don't slow down at all. And then if we find that these three resources aren't enough, as we maybe hit a peak capacity, we'll also be looking to continue our contracts.
Madam Mayor? Christine, this is, I think, really smart in so many ways. And I know that from my experience in government, you're right, people are focused on doing their work, but they also need the ability to manage the expectations of ambitious goals. And I think what you're providing the city is that sort of way to manage those ambitious goals and make sure that we're all aligned. So I'm, I'm a big fan of this process and had to go through this painful process myself and figuring out how to do this. Talk to me a little bit about, you know, the centralized manner of this, because you've talked about centralizing this and making sure that everybody knows what everything's going on, but I see it kind of bifurcated. So help me clear that up in my mind.
Yeah, thank you, council member. So what we are attempting to do, being mindful of culture and everything that is going on and how kind of destabilized things have been, we're starting out with a dotted line reporting and asking that these folks are collaborating and coordinating. Instead of doing a wholesale restructure and moving everything in one spot, we thought that would be the more prudent approach to go as we're practicing this and kind of getting aligned and getting level set. We thought that would provide less disruption or cause less disruption, but still provide us the clarity and the collaboration that we were looking for. So that was, has been an ongoing conversation between Director Burgos and me. But having seen this team working together over the past three to six months to even get us to that point, I think it's going to be a very effective strategy in the near term.
Madam Mayor, so I want to make sure that I understand what you're saying. So some of this will continue to be housed through the mayor's office and some of it will be continued to be housed within Public Works.
That is correct.
So we're not, we're not shifting either way. We're keeping this delineated.
Correct. And the delineation will really be on project type. So the Public Works Team is really specialized in construction, facilities, that type of work. So the workload that flows to that team will continue to be focused on that type of expertise. The project managers that will be coming in on Wendy's team are a bit more generalist, so they'll be able to tackle things that don't require really deep subject matter expertise in more of the construction, general contractor type of work. So the way that we're thinking about them is as a team that's sharing methodologies or sharing reporting practices, having peers to, you know, hey, how would you handle this or how might you go about thinking about this? But really kind of make sure that the Public Works Facilities Team is still really focused on that bricks and sticks portion of it. Whereas Wendy's folks will be stepping in with a little bit more flexibility and a general skill set.
So you could say that the mayor's office may have a little bit more of a policy-based in their, in their project management, whereas Steve's team is all the nitty-gritty, I think you call it sticks and bricks. Yeah.
I like that. I get that right?
I'm writing that down.
Versus dicks. Yeah. Rob's nodding. Okay.
Is that?
I think that's fair to say. There are also things in the mayor's office that were just simply better suited to do when it's really, really cross-departmental. So there may be things that come to the mayor's office project management team that it's like, oh, there's a parks and rec component to this and there's also a planning development services component to it mixed in. That's, that's, the vantage point of the mayor's office allows us to do that really broad citywide when it touches multiple departments work. Whereas Rob, Sean, those folks, a fire station is, is a fire station and that's, that is well within their lane. So the mayor's office folks will also be working on both the policy bits and I would just say the stuff that's a little more citywide in nature. All right. So from here, next steps, we will be building that partially centralized, we have to come up with a better word for that, coordinated, I don't know. But we will be building out that project and program manager structure to include, as we said, the facilities team, the folks in Wendy's enterprise project management team, and really working on dotted line relationships to other project managers. So as I referenced, like folks at the airport, folks in IT. So really bringing together what we've been talking about as kind of a center for excellence for project managers to share. We'll continue to monitor our project throughput, make sure that we see the results that we're intending to with this. And then we'll be exploring like what it might look like to implement a fully centralized project management, but we see that as being a multi-year venture and this being is the first step. Questions?
Madam Mayor. Christine, real quickly, I know you, you referenced recruiting internally. I guess my understanding when we approved these positions was that this were, this was a skill set that we didn't currently have on staff and we needed it. So I understand totally, always asking internally, but I want to ensure that we're getting the skill set, the new skill set that we need in these positions.
Thank you, Council President. As I said, there, there are pockets that have been having a real project management function. For example, in IT, there are some very skilled project managers that we might say, well, we would love that person working on affordable housing even over these other IT projects. So those are the types of things that we're discussing. Like, are there folks that are really well, highly qualified that might get us off and running faster? So we'll explore that. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we have three to go snag, but we're going to explore that and move on from there.
Well, and to be clear too, some of the feedback was we had contract positions to begin with and we weren't able to recruit the high quality of folks and it could well have been some internal folks as well into contract positions. And the feedback was it was the importance of having the certainty of the full-time position.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Christine. So it was at one of these sessions four years ago that I proposed that we begin our work on creating a strategic plan for diversity, equity, inclusion at the city of Boise. And I can't believe it's been four years now. And so, you know, that work is ongoing. I would like to see that we include that vision in this new position that we're creating because I think, I think the goal of making sure that we have all these different elements and missions and initiatives be a part of these projects that we're doing, I think that's a wonderful approach. And I'm excited to see how we incorporate DEI into the suffered as well.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. And Christine, I just got to watch the time.
Yep.
Notice, for me, not for you, because I'm not watching the time. So we will, we need to move into the library discussion on the mental health coordinator position. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am here also, as Christine, requested follow-up from our December meeting in which the council-
Oh, Jessica, we can't really hear you.
Okay, sorry.
There you go.
Oh, wow.
Now you can hear yourself.
Yes, now I can hear, I can definitely hear myself. That is an improvement for everyone in the room. So as requested, I am here to follow up from our December meeting where you approved the library, a new full-time position as a mental health coordinator. And at that time, you asked some questions for follow-up and so I'm here today. I want to focus, I'll, I'll step back with a little bit more additional information on the context and the need for the role. I'll talk a little bit about how we envision the role and then I really want to share with you what we envisioned the first six months of having this position filled because of the learning that we will be doing that will help us understand how we as an entire library system can take advantage of this position to help us be more effective. So the background, really I want to ground us in the need. We recognize that there is an ongoing public health crisis that has been made worse by the ongoing pandemic. We are seeing throughout our community that mental health needs are unmet because, quite frankly, the supply has outstripped the demand. We're seeing increased calls to the Idaho suicide prevention hotline. We're seeing increased use of mental health services. And our, our community is reporting an increase in concern about the mental health of their family or family members. So I wanted, you know, to start with grounding where we are as a community. And why that's important is that that need shows up in our facilities every day. Every day at all of our locations, we interact with people who are in various levels of mental health crisis. Some that are under stress, some that are concerned about mental health for themselves or someone in their family. And the library is at this point just not meeting the need of the community. Our staff are supportive. We can help refer people to services, but really understanding where those services are and how to best access them, how to have a really graceful transfer to those community services we're just not equipped to do. We are a trusted, accessible public space, so people come to us with those needs. And the mental health coordinator position will allow us to design a systematic approach to better understand those community needs, to help our people and our services align to support that. And then, most importantly, also coordinate with other service organizations so that we are able to understand, you know, what we see in our library, what we see with our users and where there might be gaps or where we can be effective in our collaborative work. So the position that we have envisioned, we're thinking of how it can help anyone in the community who's experiencing a life change, a life challenge or who needs help to navigate that complex system. And there's sort of three areas, three main areas that we've scoped out for this position to really focus on. First is that direct work with the public. So when people are coming in and saying like, hey, I don't understand some of these systems. How do I apply for social security? How do I apply for housing? Having really expertise that helps make sure that that question gets answered effectively. Part of that is also what support are we providing for our staff so that we can scale that expertise across the system? If we're answering the same question over and over, having somebody who is listening and saying, hey, wait, we're starting to see this need pop up in two of our locations, let's make sure all five have the same information and are able to make sure that we're either, you know, we know how a resource is available, we know how to access it, we're able to really take that expertise and make sure that all the staff have that knowledge. And then third is that community partnership development. So really understanding what are the other social services in the area and how do we tap their expertise? And where, when we see people come in, where are they in that need? And how do we make sure that we're really thoughtful in not being duplicative, but being coordinated across?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Question. Director Dore, you know, I'm a big fan of the library and all the services that it provides. What I need help understanding is that it sounds like we are adding wraparound services to library. Help the public and myself understand why the library is a key point in this? Because I think we all understand that mental health is a huge issue in all communities, but why the library?
Sorry, Councilmember, we all understand what? I just didn't catch the words.
We all understand that mental health is a, is a huge issue in our community and all across the country, and I would say the world. But why is the library the best point for the service?
Thank you, Councilmember Willetts. This is really an attempt for us to meet a need that we're currently not meeting. And I think part of that goes to our trusted expertise in a community. We are seen as an organization that is non-judgmental, that you can walk into and say, I need help and I don't know where else to go. You know, we, and this is something that, you know, staff have really been aware of acutely, that people will come into us, walk up to the reference desk and say, I lost my job. I don't know if I'm going to be able to make rent. How can you help me? And they break down. There is so much that we, you know, that trust that we have, we want to pay that back to the community by helping really understand what are all the services that person may need in terms of help for housing, employment, their own mental health. We want to be able to meet the need that we see. And that ability to do it across our whole system, I think, is the other piece that I'm really, really excited about. Having an, you know, having a mental health professional who combines with our information professionals is going to help us think about those, those individuals in terms of how do we, how do we better create a service? And how do we also sort of get ahead of that? Where do we see, where, where's the role for training? Where's the role for having community conversations about mental health? Where are places that we can really be proactive in helping support a community better understand and take care of its, its family, friends, and neighbors?
Madam Mayor. Just to follow up and amplify your statement, Jessica. When I hear your description of that and the purpose of this position and the work that, quite frankly, your staff has already been doing to the best of their ability during most difficult time. And I think about Chief Lee's earlier presentation. It's the, it's the community policing without the policing part and without the guns. It's where folks feel that they will be, as you said, received without judgment, without fear. And this is nothing against our, our police force, but that is an area that our community, I think, has, has been highlighting recently. It's, they want to be able to access services. Unfortunately, I think there's been only a few designated resources that may or may not be the best. And the fact of the matter is, the library has been that place. And I, for one, am very grateful that you in this leadership role have identified that your staff is doing this work. They need more training and there needs to be somebody to really direct this important work. But that's, that's how I see it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. You know, this is a role that I think libraries have been, probably in the last 20 years, have, have really added because of the need, the complexities of the system, the complexities of the people, you know, the backgrounds of the people that come into facilities that have, you know, really important issues that show up in many different ways. And, and really helping create a profession within a profession. One of the things that we have done since December, when you approved this position, was really reach out to a lot of our peer libraries that have, have had experience with a position like this. They helped us formulate the job description. And there, there is actually a peer network of roles of this in a, in a library. So we've started making inroads where we can, when this person is on board, that they'll be able to join a community of practice so that they're getting some of the, the knowledge of the field and, you know, tools that can make them and us more effective. And so what I want to talk about is sort of what we envisioned the first six months of this position because it will be a considerable, considerable amount of learning and really focused on, well, how do we, how do we as an entire system get better and more effective about meeting mental health community needs in, through our libraries, but also through our partnerships? We have decided that this position will be based downtown, but will have office hours at all locations because we really want to understand what are the needs that we're seeing across the city, particularly as different communities change and different demographics change as well. We're going to ask them to establish relationships with our other local support organizations, start in, start to identify what are the staff training and resource needs to join that professional network and to really come back to, to the library and obviously to council as well with a very clear understanding of what, what are the needs that we're seeing in the library? And how can the library as a whole use its staff, its services, its facilities, and its partnerships to better meet community needs?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Jessica, I don't know if, if this is information that has been tracked or if there's an intention to track it. I'm just wondering, you know, since it's a public service, anybody can use it. Have we been able to track if this is solely used by Boiseans? Or if there are other members of other neighboring communities who may be coming to the library for these services?
Councilmember Sanchez, we can track that. But I think that's actually something that the position should also look at is how do we measure its effectiveness? And how do we measure who we're serving would be a piece in that. I think that's a great suggestion.
Yes, especially since, first of all, I think it's wonderful that, again, that we're providing this. We're not splitting hairs about whose responsibility it is. But the fact of the matter is, we do have other entities that it would be great if they would direct some resources to this. Again, to Councilmember Willetts' question, why is the library in a position to be providing these services? And, you know, we live in Ada County, we live in the state of Idaho. Those are two entities that could certainly be directing resources to address this issue. Thank you, Jessica.
So next steps. Uh, we are working with, uh, human resources right now to finalize the job posting. Uh, and we'll begin recruitment for the position. Obviously, after that, we will then, uh, hire and onboard the position. Uh, and the position, uh, one other thing to note, uh, we've decided that this position will report to our, uh, head of public services. And that's the position that oversees, uh, all of the people who work with the public across our system. So we're really deliberate in thinking that this one position needs to be situated within the library so that it is best able to take the learning across and very quickly distribute and scale information. Uh, and then I'm really excited, after six months or so, we'd love to come back to you and share what we've learned and how we're responding and specifically dig into the questions about what have we learned as a system? And what have we learned as we've coordinated with, uh, community partners? And once again, I'd really like to thank you, uh, for funding this position. I think it will make our, all of our library more effective and meet a, a really important community need.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton.
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks.
Yeah, um, so I guess, um, maybe this is a question, maybe this is just kind of clarifying some understanding. I think that earlier it was asked, you know, why is the library the best place to kind of put this position? And I guess my understanding is that the library is sort of already doing this on a, on a regular basis. People are coming into the library with a variety of different issues. Yet we have a staff that isn't necessarily trained in how to handle some of those specific issues. Am I understanding that correctly? And is that kind of the type of training that this person would be helping with our library staff, um, better understand how do we make trauma-informed decision care? How do we respond to somebody who's going through a mental health crisis? How do we make sure that we're understanding the different, uh, barriers that people are coming in and facing so that we can have, let them have access to the different resources? Am I understanding that correctly?
Councilmember Hallie Burton, that is so well said. That is exactly the, the impetus behind this. We're doing this work now. We could do it so much more effectively with two pieces, you know, how is our staff trained exactly in those? You know, how do you do one-on-ones with somebody who is really in a moment of crisis? But then also, when people are not in crisis and we're, what are we listening for? And where are we seeing the resources that we could be providing? Could actually help people from getting to that point?
And then, Madam Mayor, just a quick follow-up question there. So as far as some of the, the trainings that we're talking about, I know that you're wanting to kind of go through and identify what those needs may be. But, you know, if we were running a, um, a swimming pool, we would be training everybody with CPR and first aid. And there's all sorts of training out there that's more like, you know, mental health first aid or, you know, question, respond and refer training, you know, to kind of be able to point people to the right resources. Are those the types of things that we would be training people is that type of, that type of response when they, they are going to be interacting with people who are in various stages of mental health issues, knowing how to respond and how to refer those people to the correct places?
I think what, what we're excited about is having somebody who's an expert come in and spend six months really identifying what are those training needs? You know, we've been doing training for our staff because they've been asking for more of this work. It is, you know, tends to be sort of bring in an outside expert. One time, you know, as new staff are on boarded, we don't have the, we're not sure who's been trained in what. So having somebody who really thinks about our staff as an asset and does an assessment of, okay, where are our staff in terms of their skills in the areas that you outlined? And then how will we put in place more ongoing and internal training? So that we're continually refreshing skills, particularly because a lot of the needs change and the resources available change. So having somebody who's helping lead that, I think, will be really important for us to be effective long-term.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that clarification. The ongoing training, you know, certainly times change and there's different obstacles, you know, that we'll have to get people caught up with. So thank you for that clarification.
All right, we are good. Thanks, Jessica. I think we're going to take a, we're, we're okay on time. So we're going to take a five-minute break. People can take a quick break and then we'll start on broadband for the last 45 minutes of our morning meeting. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. And our final topic today, and I'm sorry that Councilmember Widdings isn't with us because this is a topic that she's been keenly interested in, um, supporting and making sure that we're doing right, and that is broadband. So, Jessica's here to, oh, sorry, not Jessica. Sorry. Alex is here today with Adam to, um, share a study and the approach that we'll be taking at this time, when we both need to look at how we ensure that everyone in this community has access for a variety of reasons. Um, but whether or not there are financial opportunities that we have right now.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Alexandra Winkler, the city's chief information officer. I'm excited to be here today for the first time, my debut appearance in front of council and talking about such an important issue of broadband in Boise. The mayor, the mayor has engaged me to lead city efforts to improve the state of broadband, not just for city government, but for the city of Boise in support of multiple city priorities, including economic development and digital access. I assume this will be the first of many discussions on this subject. We have much to accomplish. Today, I'll discuss where we are with broadband in Boise and propose broadband goals. Then I'll turn over the mic to a consultant guest of ours. Let's see, his name is Ziggy Rivkin Fish from CTC Technology. We engaged him for a broadband study. He'll talk about their recommendations and then we'll talk about next steps. Ziggy and I will field questions and feedback. And I'm hoping to leave today with some firm direction on next steps.
So is Ziggy online?
He is.
Okay, great.
Can you go on camera, Ziggy, to make sure you're there? Should be. He's out of Washington DC.
Great, thanks.
We confirmed he's on Zoom, but we'll see his face soon.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
He is on, and I just promoted him.
Great, thanks.
Perfect. Thank you.
Welcome, Ziggy.
So.
Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Welcome. To create the opportunity for everyone, we must ensure that everyone who lives, works and plays in Boise, like residents, businesses and different anchor institutions, have equitable access to reliable, affordable, high-speed internet. While we know much of Boise has high speed or has internet access, it's not yet fast enough, reliable enough, affordable enough to meet current and future needs. It doesn't yet provide equal access to educational, economic and health opportunities. In short, we want to stimulate the development of the kind of future-proofed, expandable broadband network Boise needs to improve the lives of its residents with equitable digital access and to promote economic development. So to support the city's priorities, we drafted the following broadband goals. When we talk about closing gaps, we want to encourage equitable private investment in next-generation fiber infrastructure. So no Boise neighborhood has difficulty accessing educational, economic and health opportunities on networks with limited capacity. We want in 100% of homes and businesses in Boise to have the infrastructure required to get high-speed internet. For residences, this means 100 megabits per second download and upload speed, even during peak usage periods. Service should be reliable and not prone to outages. We also needed affordable, especially for low-income families and small businesses. The target is getting out-of-pocket costs to $10 to $15 per month for qualified families. And how do we end targeting ways to decrease installation costs for small businesses? That can be a real factor, just getting it to their buildings. We want one that can make it last. A, a future-proofed, right-sized, public fiber network that enables the city's economic development, digital equity, holistic housing, smart city goals, and reduces the city government's dependence on leased fiber. Finally, we need to team with others and develop partnerships with public and private stakeholders to understand barriers and priorities and collaborate to ensure digital access for all that live, work and play in Boise. These are the proposed goals. So getting into the current state of broadband in Boise, the city of Boise today is served by multiple ISPs or internet service providers that offer both wired and wireless broadband service. This in comparison to other cities is competitive, and I'm putting air quotes up there, competitive. It doesn't mean that multiple ISPs choose to overbuild on any particular block, if that makes sense. They don't compete for the same households necessarily. So while we might have a number of them in the Treasure Valley or in Boise proper, they don't necessarily compete for the same households. And that means that they're not necessarily incentivized to modernize the infrastructure. When it comes to data, we've been researching available open source data. When it comes to data, we've been researching available open-source data and have learned that speed tests in data have shown what you see up here on the screen. 66% of households experience download speeds less than 100 megabits per second. We know when we, this is the kind of thing that you need to watch or stream video, right? That's what the download speed is. We also know from our dataset that our speeds are slightly lower than that of Eagle and on par with Meridian. The upload speeds are a different picture. Only the blue at this point meets 100 megabits per second upload speed. This is what you need to be able to actively engage in Google Classroom or a meeting from home. So this isn't what you can have or the ISP's capacity. This is what people are experiencing in this dataset. So while we know what I showed, we don't yet know which addresses are lacking the infrastructure needed to have adequate internet speeds. And more than that, we don't have a complete picture yet of the digital access barriers and needs of the community. Broadband infrastructure and service only represents one of five elements of digital inclusion. To have digital access also requires internet-enabled devices, access to digital literacy training, quality tech support, helpful technology tools and online content. So to meet larger digital equity goals, we know we need a more complete picture of community needs. Based on our work in our current environment, we believe we have the unique opportunity today to capitalize on available funding and more widespread recognition that internet truly is an essential utility in order to build the kind of fiber network we need in Boise. Boise is growing in leaps and bounds and creating quite an attractive market for internet service providers to invest in our valley. Our federal and state legislatures are recognizing we don't yet have the infrastructure required, and they're providing dollars for capital investment, education campaigns, and resources to help families pay for internet services. Multiple entities, in addition, are working on this problem at the same time, creating opportunities for and interest in partnerships with both public and private organizations. In the summer of 2020, IT drafted several options to look beyond our internal city government networking needs and suggest ways to improve the city's broadband infrastructure in support of, like we talked about earlier, our city goals for digital equity, economic development, and other benefits. The mayor and former CIO engaged an independent consultant, CTC, to assess the feasibility of a couple different approaches, compare their costs and opportunities. They performed their analysis and came up with their study last month. Here to talk to us about the recommendations is Ziggy Rivkin-Fish, the Vice President for Broadband Strategy at CTC. CTC Technology is an industry leader in broadband and telecommunications consulting that supports state and local governments, consortia, tribes, economic development organizations, and other public entities. They create customized solutions from market assessments to procurement, construction to adoption. So Ziggy, how about we turn it over to you to talk about your findings?
All right. Thank you very much. I'm delighted to be here. Yeah, so let's, maybe I should first review some of the sort of key findings. As Alex noted, Boise is, market is competitive. Again, that doesn't mean that there's a lot of overbuild between different providers, but it does mean that Boise is largely built out with infrastructure. In terms of the ideal, which is a fiber infrastructure capable of delivering symmetric 100-megabit-per-second speeds or faster, you've got that spread throughout the city, although selectively, and both TDS and Central Link are investing in upgrading their existing DSL based on old telephone copper lines to fiber. But as you can imagine, they are likely to cherry-pick and prioritize areas with higher revenue potential. So it's certainly not going to be an even upgrade, and certainly not if you have equity goals in mind. There is slower coax cable infrastructure that's delivered by Sparklight, present in most areas. That doesn't mean it connects to every single one, and it certainly is very unclear what their plans are in terms of upgrading that cable technology to accommodate symmetric, very-high-speed internet service. We evaluated a city-funded conduit system, and our conclusion was that it would be fairly costly. The city does not own the right-of-ways, and the market is fairly saturated, so any provider that wanted to take advantage of it would have to compete with with the existing incumbents. And since they are covering just about the entire city, that would not be a great that would have probably little appetite without additional incentives. We do have there are, the example of West Des Moines, Iowa, they built an open-access conduit system for Google Fiber. And but in that case, there was no competing fiber to the premise provider, and they did own their own right-of-way. And yet still, they, our conclusion was that they are still going to be significantly in the red, unlikely to recover even 50% of their costs. So it's certainly something that can be done, but there are there are high risks and costs involved in terms of Boise. Incentivizing a private provider to take on part of the financing risk presents some obstacles too. The city lacks significant unserved areas where high-take rates can generate healthy revenues, and as I said, does not control its right-of-way, nor does it have extensive utility poles or existing conduit infrastructure it could leverage. And so that minimizes the city's ability to lower the capital costs or operating costs for a potential partner ISP. So as a result, the city would likely need to provide significant public funding to incentivize a partner to assist in achieving the city's broadband goals, something that may be more palatable on an opportunistic basis, which I'll get to. Just, I know that there had been some interest in AMN. They used a fairly innovative model of funding. They funded a selective, open-access fiber-to-the-premise infrastructure. They didn't have an existing fiber-to-the-premise provider, so that made it attractive for a fiber-optic provider. And they used neighborhood interests to reach a certain threshold. And once it reached that threshold, the neighborhood could then participate through self-financing mechanism to get that service extended to them. It is an innovative funding model, but it does, of course, mean that it would conflict with any digital equity goals because it's obviously the more affluent areas that would be able to do this. And again, since both TDS and Central Link are likely to expand exactly to those areas, it would have limited applicability. In terms of recommendations, pursuing regional collaboration opportunities, exchanging ideas and collaborating on joint projects with other local communities and governments in the broader region, and expanding the market to a larger region would be more attractive to a prospective partner. ISPs tend to think in larger geographic units, and so a collaborative approach could be beneficial to all parties, and certainly something that we recommend exploring. Conducting a detailed digital equity study and survey, a better understanding of the infrastructure gaps, where exactly they are, an assessment of barriers to effective use such as affordability, skills, comfort with or access to computers or tablets is needed to get a full picture of how to effectively close those broadband gaps. And understanding that can really help informed one of the other recommendations we have, which is an RFP, Effective RFPs, do best when they include a lot of detail from a market analysis. Pursuing build opportunities where funding and support is available, state and local fiscal recovery funds from ARPA are some of the most flexible funds available with few strings attached. They can be deployed strategically for both planning and infrastructure built, as well as digital equity initiatives. And there are other upcoming funds such as Capital Projects and the Infrastructure Bills B program. Those will flow through the state. But depending on how the state structures these opportunities, there could be opportunities to target housing complexes, and there could also be E-Rate and HUD funding that could be explored to, especially in terms of affordable housing and extending quality, high-speed, affordable infrastructure to those areas. It's also an opportunity, perhaps, to define opportunities in such a way that you can get in front of the state and perhaps influence the state in its structuring of these opportunities. That's something that we always recommend, since the states will have a lot of latitude in how they organize this funding. And then reducing infrastructure congestion through DIG1's policies. Installing underground utilities in general is very costly. Breaking ground and the labor itself, and it is an expensive aspect of it, and it can take a long time to complete. These, beside, and they are even more costly, as you can imagine, in urban areas where there are pavements and traffic flows, et cetera, to manage. DIG1's policies incentivize coordination of multiple interested parties to install assets at the same time while the ground is broken. Initiatives like this would need to be coordinated with the county, since the city does not control its right-of-way, but could potentially create opportunities for installing conduit banks for excess and future capacity for multiple utilities. And there are also other benefits besides opportunistically creating new infrastructure for the city and ISPs to support gigabit fiber, such as less disruptions and better resilience against natural hazards. So questions? I know I covered a lot.
I just have one more slide, and I'd love to get into a more thorough conversation on this. I know it's the first time we've talked about this, and it's a lot of words and new concepts. So again, I expect this to be the first conversation of many as we go down this journey to improving internet access. So based on CTC's analysis, we agree that a public-private partnership approach has a higher likelihood of meeting city goals and potentially leveraging federal funding, infrastructure grants, and that it makes sense, instead of building first and engaging private companies second to come to us or other public entities, we should first try to establish partnerships and build second. Go out with an RFP, for example, with other public entities or other partners. The opportunities and constraints of that partnership would then inform which kind of public-private approach we go for. There's a variety of different methods there. And to pursue this approach, we believe we need to take the following first steps. We need to meet with regional, public, and private stakeholders like Ada County, neighboring cities, schools, Idaho Power, ACHD, and private industry. We intend to share priorities, barriers, plans, funding opportunities, and data with them, and seek those interested in connecting their sites to a potential regional or city network. We know that we need to establish means of communicating about opportunistic builds. What are we planning at any given time, and how might we share trench space, for example? And that it would be very important to work with ACHD on both project notification and DIG1's. Furthermore, we know, as discussed already, that it's important to get more detailed digital equity data to create a very thorough value-driven broadband plan, so that needs to be one of the first things that we do. And then finally, publishing a request for proposal, seeking private partners willing to help us meet our goals, as well as any other entities that want to join with us. And together, we would seek federal funding grants potentially to help fund us. So as our study states that CTC gave us, broadband has joined the ranks of essential utilities alongside water and electricity. An affordable, reliable, fast connection is necessary to fully participate in the 21st-century knowledge economy. We want to ensure everyone that lives, works, and plays in Boise has equal access to that essential utility. And I stand for questions, along with Ziggy.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you. Do we have a timeline if, you know, everything's ideal, you get those partnerships in place, you get all those entities to sign on, because as you said, this is a vital service that we realized over the last few years, that not everybody in our community has the same level of access when they need it. And so I'm just curious, what's the timeline for something like this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, thank you. We don't have a timeline yet, because today is about landing on our goals and the approach, and then from there, we want to establish the timeline. That said, if we intend to use ARPA fiscal recovery funds, there's timelines for obligating those funds. In terms of, with your permission and firm direction today on next steps, we can go at getting a digital equity study, starting to get contracted, for example, this spring, starting the broadband planning this summer, kind of thing, so that we can fully get this up and running. Also, this isn't kind of one of those projects where it's, you do it all at once. This is going to be staggered, we're going to have different milestones, and we do think it will be necessary to have a couple seed projects, proofs of concept, that we pick first and then build off of. And so we could come forward in the next quarter with a more detailed plan. And so that's what we're planning on this time.
So when you say digital equity study, are you talking about the members of our community who are most at need? Are we talking about families with children, low-income families? Is that what we're talking about?
All of the above, and it's also local businesses. It's not only the equity of the people that live in our community, but it's the businesses that want to offer services in our communities. So it supports not only, digital access not only supports the residents, but the small businesses, the big businesses, that try to do work here too. So we need the companies to be able to thrive, to employ the people that live here also. So it's equal parts both that. It also could be the different public entities within the community, different anchor institutions. So we intend to do a fairly comprehensive look, including those that you spoke of, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Why don't we have Councilmember?
Let's have Councilmember Bajin go, and then Council President, just so we don't lose him. Great.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to call attention to the first part of the presentation that pointed out, you know, this is a competitive market in quotes. And I think for us, as we understand and think about this, I think internet access generally and broadband has been a tremendous market success in Internet access generally and broadband has been a tremendous market success in getting Internet to communities. It's been a, I think it's like, there's a pretty good argument that there's a big market failure in expanding and improving that technology. And the blunt way to put it is that the ISPs have divided up our communities and they don't compete with each other on a block-by-block basis. There's no incentive, there's no market incentive to make the kinds of investments that need to be made to improve everybody's quality of service, including underserved people, people who are currently properly served but won't be properly served by, you know, prevailing standards in 40 years or whatever. So this is the right thing to do. I'm really curious to help and to support and to do whatever I can to really understand where the value proposition is for a private entity in the partnership. I know there is one. There's some resources, there's some cash with various federal fundings that can help. But there's also, again bluntly, the state of play is that these entities are competing with each other and we ought to be able to extract something from the service provider community in return for building out these, these systems. And then the thing that we can give them in return is probably some form of access or some form of partnership. So as, you know, I know we're just beginning and just embarking, but I think this is really exciting and really fantastic because this is one of the opportunities where, again, there is a clear market failure that's failing to serve people that a local government has the opportunity to intervene and assist in. And so I'm, I'm just very excited about that and very excited to, to watch and help as I can.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. It's great to, to see you. I, I, so I have two questions, two kind of major questions. First is the city owns at least some fiber network, I think in partnership with ACHD already. And that wasn't really mentioned in this. It serves primarily our EMS or our emergency services network, if I'm not mistaken. Is that positioned such physically that it could play a role in this?
It can. What we own right now is about three miles of fiber, not, not in a row, but like chunks of fiber through underneath downtown. We also own a fiber ring around the airport. That's not insignificant. It's pretty good. It connects the entire airport. We also lease dark fiber from Zayo currently and we connect to 70-plus city, city facilities. Okay? So that forms our own kind of city government network at this time. And we light up that network. In effect, the city government is its own ISP. Adam over here is our infrastructure senior manager and runs that network. So we actually know how networks work at the city. We run our own. We can build on not only that kind of fiber, but we can build on the expertise that we have learned over the last 10 years. Another thing that I need to mention is the reason we have that fiber underneath the city today, that three miles that I mentioned, is because of CCDC projects that have been sponsored. And that's been a part of their amazing innovative pilots that they've done is they've laid that conduit bank with some fiber in it that allows us to connect different pieces of the city. So you're right, Council President, we do have some existing things we can build on. In terms of the scale of the city, that's not that much, but we do have is the expertise and the scrappiness and the desire to kind of build on that. And we have ideas about seed projects that we'd like to consider to keep building, building, building and, and further connect. And Ada County, we've talked to them already. They have this desire to build a rearing around it. I don't know if everyone here saw the Statesman article about that. The more you can connect the different pieces of your network, the more redundancy and better service you have in the community. And that's the kind of plan that we want to put together, assuming that we have the digital equity data to build that plan.
Okay, thank you. So it does sound like at least we have some basis that we could start on with this partnership. The other question I have is, you know, there's been a lot of conversation around this state of what's loosely called the AMN model of open access fiber. As I was reading through the memo, I was trying to understand if that's what's being suggested here or not. And if it's not, I just want to understand what's the difference between what they're doing and what's being suggested here? Just so as I learn more about it, I can understand that.
Really good question. So the AMN model is not what we're suggesting here at this time. The AMN model covers, I think, seven square miles. We have upwards of 800 square miles, right? So we have a different geographic area to deal with. What they had is no fiber, no incumbents for ISPs really that wanted to go to AMN at the time. So we have existing infrastructure owned by private companies in Boise. If we were to go with the AMN model here, we'd virtually, we'd be competing against those ISPs. We're talking about teaming with them to build the best kind of network that serves Boise as opposed to having to come in from scratch. Ziggy, would you say anything else? You were talking about the AMN model. Did, did I cover it or would you add more?
Yes. The only thing I would add is that in addition to, to what you mentioned is it may also, just the funding mechanism may conflict with equity goals and objectives, which I think is important to the city. But yes, the lack of infrastructure there made it a very attractive proposition. The scale is much smaller. It's easier to deal with. But it, it would be, it's not impossible to do it here, but it would mean difficult to finance.
Madam Mayor, one more follow-up if I could. So I appreciate that and I thought that was the answer, but I just wanted to make sure for, you know, everyone who might be listening today that, that they knew what we were talking about. As I look at the suggestions in the memo and that you presented today, it's, I, I think they're good ones, the four steps. I wonder like Councilmember Sanchez about the timing, given the ARPA funding and the potential to really utilize it to focus on the equity piece of this. You know, what do we need to get this on the ground, running? Figure out where those partnerships are, figure out, get that study done so we really know where the equity needs are as quickly as possible so we can move forward with getting service to the folks that don't have it today.
Well, and I'll jump in here. That, that was key to Alex today that, that the council affirmed the direction she's proposing. And then they start on those steps.
Madam Mayor, Director Winkler, thank you so much. This is exciting and, and long overdue. You touched on this before and I just want to put a finer point on it. There's several government entities that are interested in this for all the reasons you've described. In fact, I saw a headline on it today. Is there a working group among Ada County and some of the other cities? And could you describe how you, how we're going to make sure that we work together to save and be effective in our resources?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, as of yet, there is no working group. That is one of the things that we would like to bring these parties together. We've had a lot of one-to-one conversations. We want to bring all the stakeholders together and start having a collective discussion, putting all this information on the table and working together that we will, we do want to start getting a group together. First of the public stakeholders and building it out from there. We have been, like, we just had a meeting with the schools last week and with Ada County, just one-to-one. But we think that that needs to be one of the next steps.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you very much. And Ziggy, thanks for joining us today.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will break until we reconvene for a noon meeting. And for those of you watching, we'll be back here at noon online. Relatively quick, very quick agenda, and then we'll be going into executive session. Thank you.